Good afternoon and welcome to the Committee on Health jointly with the Subcommittee on COVID and Infectious Diseases. At this time, we ask that you please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Councilmember Francisco Moya. I'm Chair of the Subcommittee on COVID and Infectious Diseases. I'm joined by Councilmember Lynn Schulman, who is the Chair of the Committee on Health, to discuss the very important issues that affect the health and well-being of our children and our communities. But before we begin, I'd like to recognize my colleagues who are here today. Councilmember Mealy Delarosa and Mar Marado, welcome, everyone. Since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, the share of kindergarten children up to -- sorry, since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, the share of kindergarten children up to date on their routine vaccinations has ticked down. According to the CDC, for the third year in a row, the national MMR, DTAP, and chickenpox vaccination rates among kindergarten students fell below the Healthy People 2030 target of 95%, which is the level needed to prevent community transmission of measles. As of 2023, the rate of coverage for such state-required vaccinations is 93%. While this may seem like a small decline, this is actually the lowest reported rate of coverage in almost a decade, and leaves about 250,000 schoolchildren unvaccinated and unprotected against measles, one of the world's most contagious viruses. Measles were -- was declared eliminated in the United States in 2000, thanks to the widespread use of the MMR vaccine, which protects against measles, mumps, and rubella. However, in recent years, we have seen a resurgence of measles outbreak across the country and around the world fueled by misinformation, fear, and the lack of access to vaccines. According to the CDC, more than 1,200 cases of measles were reported in the United States in 2019, the highest number since 1992. Most of these cases occurred amongst unvaccinated people, especially children. New York City was one of the epicenters of the measles outbreak, with more than 600 cases reported in 2019, mostly in Brooklyn and Queens. The outbreak was declared over in September 2019 after a massive public health response that involved vaccinating thousands of people, issuing fines, and closing schools. The measles outbreak, as well as the COVID-19 pandemic, has been a wake-up call. They have shown us that we cannot take our health and safety for granted. These outbreaks showed us that we need to protect ourselves and our children from preventable diseases by following the best scientific evidence and the recommendations of the CDC and the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices. These are the experts who decide which vaccines are safe and effective for the general U.S. public, based on rigorous research and data. However, not all children have access to vaccines. Some children face barriers such as poverty, language, transportation, or immigration status. Some children come from countries where vaccines are not readily available, or where they have experienced war, violence, persecution. These children are especially vulnerable to diseases and need our support and compassion. In New York City, students who are refugees or asylum seekers have the right to attend school full-time, as long as they meet the age and residency requirements. But these students and their families face additional barriers to receive the state-required vaccine for school attendance, such as lack of documentation and access, as well as various administrative barriers. Childhood vaccinations are not only a matter of personal choice, they are a matter of public health and social justice. They are a matter of protecting our most precious resource, which is our children. They are a matter of fulfilling our moral obligation to care for one another, especially the most vulnerable amongst us, among us. I look forward to hearing from the administration on this issue, and I want to conclude by thanking Claire Schulman and my fellow councilmembers for being here. And I would also like to thank the committee staff for their work on this hearing. And now, I would like to turn the mic over to Councilmember Delarosa to read the opening statements for Chair Schulman.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Moya. I'm here reading Chair Schulman's opening statement on the Committee on Health. Thank you, Chair Moya. Good afternoon. I am not Lynn Schulman, but I am her replacement right now. Chair of the Council's Committee on Health, I want to thank Chair Moya and the Subcommittee on COVID and Infectious Diseases for joining in today's important hearing to address the decline of childhood vaccination rates in New York City. According to a 2024 Preliminary Mayor's Management Report, in New York City, the percentage of children ages 19 to 35 months with up-to-date immunizations remains far below the 75% target and has not returned to pre-pandemic levels. The COVID-19 pandemic negatively impacted routine pediatric vaccination, in part because healthcare providers' offices were closed and young children were not attending childcare programs. DOHMH states that these decreases in coverage may also be attributed to declining number of births in New York City and the lagging census estimates of children living in New York City, meaning that the denominator used to calculate the indicator may be larger than the true denominator. The percentage of children in public schools who are in compliance with required immunizations was 90.9% in the first four months of fiscal year 2024, and a 2.3 percentage decrease compared to the same time period in fiscal 2023. I look forward to discussing DOHMH's strategies to reverse this troubling decline. As Chair of the Committee on Health, I stand ready to support children, support childhood vaccination efforts in any way that I can, and I look forward to collaborating on this issue in the future. Further, in response to the influx of new arrivals, including asylum seekers, to NYC, DOHMH, and other agencies state that they are working to link families to medical care to ensure that children are in compliance with school immunization requirements. My hope is that today's hearing will shed significant light on how the city is ensuring that asylum seekers are vaccinated and that such vaccinations are documented for continuity of care. We know that clusters of under-vaccinated and unvaccinated children can lead to outbreaks of preventable diseases, as was the case in 2019, when the city recorded 649 cases of measles. While education is key, the city must also ensure that vaccines are easily accessible and must respond to the disparities and inequities in vaccine coverage rates, particularly among Black and Hispanic children and children with Medicaid coverage or no health insurance. These inequities predated the pandemic and arose out of a wide variety of reasons, including not being able to get vaccinated from a trusted place, fear of paying out-of-pocket costs, having difficulty traveling to a vaccination site, or needing to take time off work to get an appointment. We must make it as clear and as easy as possible to learn about the benefits of vaccination and to connect families to in-community providers that provide these vaccinations for children. The city's public health depends on it. In closing, I would like to thank DOHMH for their partnership on this important topic and for testifying today. I also want to thank my staff, Jonathan Boucher, Kevin McAllier, Andrew Davis, and Jessica Silas, and the Health Committee staff, Christopher Pepe, Sarah Sushar, and Manure Butt, for their work on this important hearing. I will now turn it back to Chair Moya.
Thank you, Councilmember Delarosa. I now want to turn the -- before I do that, let me just say that we've been joined by Councilmembers Ariola, Felice Menon, and Jenar, Remote. And now, I'll turn it over to our committee counsel to administer the oath.
Thank you, Chair. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
I do.
Great. You may begin when ready.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairs Schulman and Moya, and members of the Committee on Health and the Subcommittee on COVID and Infectious Diseases. My name is Dr. Celia Quinn, and I'm the Deputy Commissioner for the Division of Disease Control at the New York City Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. I'm very pleased to be here to discuss the important topic of childhood vaccination. As a pediatrician and also a parent of school-aged children myself, I have special appreciation for the critical role of vaccination to childhood, family, and community health. Today, we'll be discussing a number of vaccines, all of which are safe and effective. In the United States, vaccine recommendations are driven by the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, which I'll refer to as ACIP or ASIP. This is a committee of medical and public health experts who are charged with providing guidance on vaccination for the country. There are more than 10 different types of vaccines recommended for children in their first two years of life, most of which require a series of two or more doses spread out across various time periods in order to provide complete protection. This includes vaccinations that protect against hepatitis B, rotavirus, diphtheria, tetanus, pertussis, polio, measles, mumps, rubella, hemophilus influenzae type B, varicella, and pneumococcal infection. It's important for children to get these vaccines according to the ACIP-recommended schedule so that they start building protection when they're young and the most vulnerable to these infectious diseases. As kids grow older, additional vaccines are recommended, including vaccines that protect against meningococcal infection and human papillomavirus or HPV. In addition, all children six months or older should get their annual flu shot and any updated COVID-19 vaccine recommended by ACIP. The Health Department has robust vaccination programming to help children in New York City get the vaccines that they need to stay healthy and prevent or limit the spread of infectious diseases in our communities. Our work focuses in four areas: reporting and surveillance, education and outreach, vaccine access, and compliance with school and childcare vaccination requirements. Reporting and surveillance allow us to identify populations at higher risk for vaccine-preventable disease and guide our education, outreach, and vaccine access programming. Required disease reporting by laboratories and healthcare providers enables us to quickly identify and respond to cases or outbreaks of vaccine-preventable disease and reduce the risk of further spread. We use surveillance data in a variety of programming, including our perinatal hepatitis B program, which provides case management for pregnant and postpartum people with hepatitis B to ensure that their exposed newborns get appropriate vaccinations and other follow-up care. Providers in New York City are required to report all vaccines administered to children 18 years of age and younger to the Health Department's Citywide Immunization Registry, which we call CIR. With their consent, immunizations administered to adults may also be reported as well. The CIR is central to almost all of our vaccination programming. Reporting enables us to estimate vaccination coverage within different groups. We use characteristics such as age, race, and ethnicity, and neighborhood of residence to identify coverage gaps and address inequities through targeted outreach and improving vaccine access. The CIR also provides real-time clinical decision support to providers so they know when a child is due for a vaccine, which is important given the complexity of the childhood vaccination schedule. Providers can also pull vaccination coverage reports for their own practice and use CIR itself, tools in CIR, to send text messages to their patients. The CIR further serves as a platform for providers who participate in our vaccine-access programs to order vaccines and monitor their stock. Finally, the CIR enables people to access their and their minor children's vaccination records through the city's My Vaccine Records website. The Health Department also works hard to educate New Yorkers on the importance of vaccination. For example, we run an annual back-to-school multimedia campaign, highlighting the safety of vaccines and reminding parents of school vaccination requirements. The fall 2023 campaign "I Vax, We Vax, Get Vaxxed" urged all New Yorkers, including children, to get their updated COVID-19 and flu vaccines by sharing reasons why these vaccines are so important. This campaign ran on television, radio, digital channels, newspapers, subway digital liveboards, and the Staten Island Ferry. We also work with New York City Public Schools on letters to parents about vaccination recommendations and requirements. To quickly reach a large number of New Yorkers, we send text message blasts, such as when COVID-19 vaccines became available to children, and to remind people when their child may be due for another dose. While these efforts are important, we recognize that healthcare providers are the best and most trusted vaccine messengers. A provider recommendation is the single most important factor in vaccination decisions. For this reason, we have extensive provider education programming, including webinars, monthly provider office hours, dear colleague letters, and guidance documents. The topics we cover in these materials are diverse, from vaccine ordering and administration to building vaccine confidence. Since the fall of 2023, we have also been working hard to ensure providers are aware of the new RSV vaccine for pregnant people and a new monoclonal antibody, both of which protect infants against RSV. Another area of focus for us is HPV. We're proud of our HPV provider toolkit, launched in 2017 and updated just last year. The toolkit includes online education and webinar trainings, information on how to talk to parents about the HPV vaccine, and patient handouts. We also visit individual provider practices to develop customized strategies that address gaps in their HPV vaccination coverage. I want to take this opportunity to remind New Yorkers that the HPV vaccine is lifesaving, and every child should get all recommended doses of this vaccine, which has been shown to be highly effective at protecting against cancers caused by HPV. These include cervical cancer. Unfortunately, HPV immunization rates have plateaued, and more than half of New York City adolescents are not fully protected against HPV by the age of 13, as recommended by ACIP. Councilmembers, I would like to enlist your support in driving up our HPV vaccination coverage rates so that we can eliminate HPV-causing cancers as a public health threat. The Health Department is also working to ensure that everyone in our city has access to vaccines. For children in particular, the best place to get vaccinated is with their primary care provider. Having regular checkups with a pediatrician in the first few years of life is vital for children's overall health and well-being. For this reason, the Vaccines for Children program is central to our childhood vaccination efforts. The Health Department administers this federally-funded program, which provides vaccines to pediatric and family practices at no cost for eligible children. The about 1,300 participating providers across New York City administer millions of free vaccines to children every year. Vaccines are also available at the city's school-based health centers, at New York City Health and Hospital sites, and at the Health Department's Immunization Clinic in Brooklyn, regardless of immigration status or ability to pay. People needing help finding a vaccination site for their child can call 311, and for COVID-19 and flu, they can visit the city's Vaccine Finder website. Finally, the Health Department works with parents, providers, and New York City schools on compliance with childcare and school immunization requirements. This includes conducting audits of immunization records at a sample of schools, encouraging schools to complete the New York State Immunization Compliance Survey, providing guidance to school staff on requirements, and tracking compliance and sharing data. Health Department physicians also review every immunization medical exemption request. Religious exemptions are not allowed in New York State. Currently, 95% of students attending public and charter schools in grades pre-K through 12 are in compliance with immunization requirements. We are working closely with New York City Public Schools, providers, and parents to bring up that number even further to ensure students and schools remain safe. Despite all this work, we still have not returned to pre-pandemic levels of vaccination coverage in children in New York City. Vaccination rates declined during the pandemic as people put off routine and preventative healthcare visits. Students were disconnected from school-based health centers, and schools switched to remote learning. Vaccine hesitance, vaccine fatigue, and misinformation about vaccines have also been associated with the pandemic. These declines in vaccine rates have been observed throughout the United States. While vaccination rates have mostly recovered from that initial drop, we are still seeing the effects of the pandemic today. Vaccination rates are down approximately 2 to 16 percentage points compared with 2019, depending on the vaccine and age group that we're looking at. We continue to see concerning delays in vaccination, with parents waiting until children enter daycare, school, or camp to get their children vaccinated. While we're concerned by these decreases, we are confident that the city can return to high levels of vaccine coverage through our extensive vaccination programming and with the support of city council and other community leaders. We urge parents to check in with their child's healthcare provider to make sure kids are up to date on their vaccines to protect their and their family's health and the health of their community. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this important topic of childhood vaccination, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, doctor. I just want to say we've been joined by Councilmember Jaeger, and that we also wish Chair Schulman a speedy recovery. I know that she's out sick today, but we wish her well, and that's why she couldn't be here today. Thank you, doctor, for the testimony. Just wanted to ask a couple of questions before I turn it over to some of my colleagues as well. In New York City, you touched a little bit on this in your testimony, but in New York City, what vaccinations are children required to receive prior to enrolling in pre-K? And also, as of June 13, 2019, New York State, as you said, no longer allows religious exemption for mandated vaccinations for school attendance. However, if a child has a specific health condition in which the vaccine may be harmful, the child's doctor may fill out a medical exemption form. Can you give examples of what type of these medical conditions may qualify for an exemption?
Thanks so much for the question, and I'm also hoping Chair Schulman is feeling better soon. So, in New York City, vaccines required for daycare, pre-K, and school attendance are DTAP or TDEP, so that's a vaccine that covers diphtheria, tetanus, and pertussis; MMR, which covers for measles, mumps, and rubella; hepatitis B, polio, and varicella. And then additionally, for children that are in daycare and pre-K, hemophilus influenza type B or HIB is required, and pneumococcal vaccine or PCV is also required. And then, to your question about medical exemptions, you know, it's pretty rare that medical exemptions are required, but some of the ones that we see are a severe allergic reaction to a previous dose of that vaccine, or for certain vaccines, a child that has severe immunocompromised should not be getting that vaccine. And because some of the medical exemptions are temporary, that request has to be -- that request -- the exemption is only valid for a year, so a new request has to be submitted each year.
Got it. Okay, thank you. With the MMR vaccine, can you please describe the importance of receiving that vaccine and what specific diseases it protects against?
Yes. So, MMR is a really important vaccine. It protects against measles, mumps, and rubella. We're trying to make sure that we reach high levels of MMR coverage because measles, the virus, is extremely infectious, so having that high coverage across the population is really important for preventing outbreaks.
Great. And when it comes to community transmission nationally, the data collected and aggregated annually by the CDC from state and local programs found that in 2021 to 2022 school year, the national MMR vaccine rate amongst kindergarten students fell below the Healthy People 2030 target of 95%, the level needed to prevent community transmission of measles. Can you please describe the importance of that 95% target and how states failing to reach that target impacts community transmission of measles nationally?
Yeah. Thanks again for that question. So, you're right, communities need to reach a certain level of vaccination to prevent the spread of a disease within the community and to protect the members of that community that might not be able to be vaccinated themselves, like we spoke about a little bit earlier. And that population coverage is sometimes referred to as herd immunity. So, the number that you need to achieve to reach that is dependent on how infectious the disease is. Hence, for measles, we need about 95% coverage to reach that herd immunity level. But wherever there are pockets of lower vaccine coverage, the risk of an outbreak is going to increase, depending on how low that coverage gets. And so, for a place like New York City, where we have a lot of travel from outside of the U.S. and from other places, that increases our risk of having measles introduced, and hence the need to have a really high level of coverage for our communities.
Right. So, I'm going to go into now locally here, so leads right into that question. Where, New York City, all children are required to receive certain vaccinations before attending pre-K and kindergarten, and according to the 2024 Preliminary Mayor's Management Report, the percentage of children ages 19 to 35 months with up-to-date immunization decreased by 0.5 percentage points to 61.5% of children immunized -- with immunizations during that quarter, the first quarter of fiscal 2024 compared with the first quarter of fiscal 2023. However, this remains far below that 75% target that has not returned to pre-COVID-19 pandemic levels. Why is it important for all young schoolchildren in New York to receive the MMR vaccine to present -- to prevent community transmission within the city? And what is the significance of that 75% target?
Sure. So, both the target and also the indicator that is on the MMR that you were referring to is talking about the proportion of two-year-olds who are up to date on the entire seven vaccine series, so not just MMR. And again, we're talking about the children between six months and 35 months, so that's the up to almost three-year-olds. You know, it requires multiple visits because each of those vaccines that's required has a series that may range from one to three or more doses during that three-year period. So, there are a lot of things that can interrupt people's ability to access care during that first three years of life, and we're certainly pushing towards that target. Many parents get caught up as their children enter school when those requirements start to kick in. But again, the reason why we are hoping that people are able to follow the ACIP guidance is to protect the children from those vaccine-preventable diseases earlier in life when they're the most vulnerable.
Got it. And when it comes to DTAP, can you describe the importance of receiving the DTAP vaccine and what specific diseases that prevents, that protects against? Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember.
Sure.
I think I talked loud enough, but let me repeat the question. No, no, thank you. Can you please describe the importance of receiving the DTAP vaccine and what specific diseases it protects against? And what's the difference between the DTAP and the TDEP vaccines?
Sure. So, DTAP and TDEP protect against the same diseases: diphtheria, tetanus, and pertussis. DTAP is used for younger children to provide that initial immunity, and then TDEP is used as a booster as people get older. So, the TDEP is approved for people 10 and older, and the DTAP is used in the younger children.
Got it. Thank you. And I just want to say we've been joined by Councilmember Narcisse. And now, I want to talk about DMH, the Bureau of Immunization. The Health Code requires that DOHMH to consolidate vaccine-preventable-disease surveillance data. You touched a little bit upon this in your opening remarks, that manages the data, cleaning, analyzing, and reporting. What diseases are healthcare providers required to report to DOHMH? And after a disease is reported, what steps does DOHMH take?
Sure. So, the -- there's a full -- there's more than 90 diseases and conditions that are required to be reported to the Health Department, and not all of them, unfortunately, are vaccine-preventable. But that full list is available within the New York City Health Code. I can talk a little bit about what happens after diseases are reported. So, we use our surveillance information to track, control, and prevent disease in the city as well, so looking at trends of diseases. But we can also use our surveillance data to take immediate action responding to either cases or outbreaks.
Got it. And based on the current data and trends, does DOHMH anticipate the declining vaccination rates to stabilize or increase in the near future?
Yeah. So, you know, we saw an increase after the pandemic, getting back closer to where we were before the pandemic in 2019. So, we've made progress towards where we were prior to the pandemic. But even prior to the pandemic, as you pointed out earlier, we're not meeting our goals and targets that we've set for ourselves to make sure that we have the highest level of protection for especially our youngest New Yorkers. So, this is why we're working so hard on all the programming that I've spoken about, to really make sure that healthcare providers, school systems, parents, communities are all working together to help make sure the youngest kids get vaccinated.
That's great. I'm going to ask just two, three more questions before I turn it over to my colleagues for some questions, but I want to talk about vaccinations dealing with asylum seekers. So, in the 2024 Preliminary Mayor's Management Report, DOHMH states that, "In response to the influx of new arrivals, including asylum seekers, DOHMH and other agencies are working to link families to medical care to ensure compliance with school immunization requirements." Can you talk a little bit about which agencies you're currently working with, and typically, how soon after arrival are asylum-seeker children being vaccinated, especially with the MMR vaccine?
Sure. So, as you all probably were, there are a lot of city agencies involved in our response to this influx of new arrivals. Specific to vaccine requirements, we're really close -- working closely with the Department of Education, with the mayor's office, with health and hospitals, with DHS, and other city agencies that are involved in sheltering, and we're adding our expertise about health and including vaccine-preventable diseases. So, at the sites where families with children are staying, city agencies and our partners are working to help families identify nearby clinics where they can receive care, such as federally-qualified health centers or H&amp;H sites, so that children can receive not just vaccination, but also comprehensive care that the children and families might need, as well as making sure that they are getting their vaccinations documented so that they can be able to attend a school. So, in terms of your question about how quickly people are accessing the MMR vaccine, so if a family with children are staying at certain of the shelter sites like Herc, they might be receiving -- able to receive vaccinations on-site, but health and hospitals will be able to speak more specifically to the details of that operation. It's also important to know that our Citywide Immunization Registry does not collect information about immigration status, so it's hard to answer the question specifically about new arrivals and when, in relation to their arrival, they've received specific vaccines.
Thank you. So, what are the current rules for school attendance for children that may not receive the full series of required vaccinations?
Sure. So, ultimately, children that attend school in New York City have to receive the required vaccines. Children don't need to be excluded from school once they are -- if they're started their process of getting the whole vaccine series. So, like I mentioned, the vaccines might require months to get caught up. So like I mentioned, the vaccines might require months to get caught up on the catch-up schedule. Once that process is started, the child is no longer excludable from school. It's also important to know that children who arrive in New York City from out of state, anywhere out of state or, and are in temporary shelter, they have to have started that vaccine series within 90 days of enrollment.
Got it. And how are the, the vaccination schedules for children tracked? Especially in the light of the fact that many are routinely being moved around the city to different locations in school districts? Do the records travel with them? And what follow-up does the agency conduct with families to ensure that the children are fully vaccinated prior to attending school?
Sure. So DOE tracks the compliance with the school requirements within their system. Luckily, we have a really robust citywide immunization registry that I spoke a little bit about earlier, which is a really truly incredible system that we're very lucky to have. You know, any vaccine that's administered within New York City is going into the citywide immunization registry. The DOE's system is able to query the citywide immunization registry to see if that child has received a vaccine administered in, within New York City. We are also work with providers and encourage them to take documentation of vaccines that were administered outside of New York City and manually enter them into CIR so that those records can be there. And like I mentioned in the testimony, once the vaccines are in CIR, it's now available to any provider in New York City that has access to CIR to see if the child has had the vaccine. And more importantly, anybody can go onto my vaccine record and get their own record or that of their young child. And I really encourage people to check out this feature because it's surprisingly easy.
Great. And last question, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues here. There have been reports on the ground that some asylum seekers and their children are at risk of duplicative vaccinations, either due to the fact that they are unable to obtain health records from where they were vaccinated or are unsure whether their children received such vaccinations. Is there a way to test either via a blood test or any other medical screening to confirm whether a child has been vaccinated for a disease such as the measles?
Yeah, it's an important question. So there are blood tests or serologic tests that can test whether a child has immunity to these vaccines. And those are acceptable as evidence of immunity, just like a vaccine administration record would be. That said, when documentation of having, having received a vaccine is not available, it may take a while for the serologic test to come back. And especially in a population where people are moving around quite a bit, is actually standard practice and safe to administer a vaccine instead of trying to get a serologic test and find out the results many days later.
Thank you. I'm now going to turn it over to Councilmember Mealy for some questions.
Yes, thank you for this important hearing. Since I'm one of the first in Brooklyn that just got hit with the Legionnaires' disease. So I know this is important. And I only have two questions. And it was about, you said DTAP. That's with the whooping cough. So now it permanently affects children too young to have completed the full vaccination course. As well as teenagers and adults who immunity has faded. Should teenagers and adults receive the DTAP vaccination, vaccine, even after receiving it in childhood? If so, in when?
Yes. So thank you for that question. The P is for pertussis, also known as whooping cough, which used to be a very common disease in childhood and very disruptive and serious condition for a lot of people. Now, we do still see cases of pertussis, like you mentioned, usually in people who've not received the full course. And in people who it's been a while since they had that DTAP or TDAP, depending on the age. So there are boosters that are required, but it's best for people to consult their pediatrician or their other primary care provider for specific guidance since the length of time between boosters may vary depending on the person.
So who is tracking the, if someone hasn't had it in a while? Would, would the city?
Yeah. I really appreciate that question. So like I mentioned, vaccines that are administered to people 18 and under have to be reported to the CIR. But in order for vaccines given to people older than 18 to be reported, the patient has to provide consent to the provider. And there's no requirement for those vaccines for adults to be reported into CIR. Some are, again, an interesting experiment would be for people to go to my vaccine record and see if you have anything in CIR. If you have given, if you have given consent and your provider is reporting to CIR your adult doses, then now you can track your own vaccine record through your whole life, which would be really helpful for you. So anyway, so that is a limitation in terms of CIR and our ability to track adult doses. But that would have to happen at the provider level for, for them to identify and recall patients where they don't have a record of them having received it.
Who will recall?
The, the provider.
Oh, the provider.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll make you come back. One second. We have now Councilmember Ariola.
Thank you, Chair. In the beginning of the testimony, you said you had 100, 649 cases of measles. What do you attribute that rate of measles to, that uptick in measles?
So that 649 cases refers to the 2019 outbreak that happened. It happened in 2019. It was over by the September of 2019 is when that outbreak had ended. So there were a few things that contributed to that outbreak. First was delayed vaccination of very young children, combined with a lot of contact among children in that age group in, looks, certain neighborhoods and communities. And another thing is travel and introducing new cases of measles into communities where there's not a high level of measles coverage. So that specific number that you're talking about was from the 2019 outbreak.
Okay. So in spring of 2022, we saw a large influx of migrants into our city. How many migrant children who are currently in school are fully vaccinated?
So like I think I mentioned earlier, we are not able to ask about immigration status for people that are receiving services from us or it's not included in CIR. So I can't specifically answer that question. We do know about what the overall compliance with school requirements is. Hold on, let me just make sure I get the right.
So then how, what, okay, so now rephrase it. For the overall school compliance, how many schools have compliance of 100%?
So I could tell you for all of New York City, 95.3% of students currently attending public and charter schools in grades pre-K through 12 are, are in compliance. This was as of earlier this week. So this is similar to the compliance that was around the end of last year. But compliance prior to the COVID pandemic was 98.5%. So we are below the level of compliance that we were prior to the pandemic. And some of the reasons are the kinds of things that we've been discussing during this hearing.
So what we've been hearing that you're discussing is that there's insurance and then there's no access. What insurance are the asylum seekers and migrants receiving once they, they come into our system?
So depending on people's immigration status, they may be eligible for a variety of different programs. Specifically in terms of childhood vaccinations, our most important access program is the Federal Vaccines for Children Program. So that is a federally funded program. And it enables us to provide free vaccinations to children who are eligible for Medicaid, uninsured or underinsured, Native American or Alaskan native, or enrolled in Child Health Plus B. So like baseline, 75% of children in New York City are eligible for Vaccines for Children. And they're receiving those vaccines through a lot of providers in New York City who are enrolled in our VFC program. We have about 1,300 participating providers.
1,300 participating providers?
I'll, I'll get you back on the second round.
Okay, I just want, just want to whip it up.
We just, we just, if you just wait, because I, I told Councilmember Mealy the same thing. So we'll come right back to you. We have Councilmember Mamorado.
Hi, thank you for coming to testify today. I just have two quick questions. If children are at low risk from hepatitis B, and if a mother does not test positive for hepatitis B, why are we that, giving the vaccine to newborns within the first few days of life? Why is that a concern? Was there a hepatitis B outbreak that I'm like unaware of or an increase in rates?
This has been a longstanding recommendation by ACIP to ensure that children who maybe there's an unknown diagnosis, make sure that people are able to be protected from hepatitis B throughout life. This is a longstanding ACIP recommendation.
Okay. Do they test mothers in the hospital for hepatitis B? Do they do a full panel once they're there to give birth?
So, and that's not part of the, like vaccine recommendations. That, some of those recommendations are going to be dependent on the provider, the person's risk factor. But again, from a population perspective, our goal is to eliminate neonatal transmission of hepatitis B. And that's why the ACIP has made that recommendation.
Okay. And also if children under 18 are really, it's like legal to, for them to have intercourse and sex, why are we pushing the recommendation of the HPV vaccine at age 13?
Yeah. So the recommendation is that children complete the HPV vaccine series by age 13, and it can actually be, start to be administered as young as nine. The ideal thing is to make sure that people have full coverage against HPV long before they ever would be exposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Menon.
Thank you so much, Chair. So the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends a reminder or recall system such as a letter or a phone call to remind parents about immunizations. Is DOHMH using that?
So sometimes we do reminders through our CIR, but we are mostly encouraging providers to use the tools that we have put into our citywide immunization registry to recall their own patients. Again, the recommendation coming from the person's provider is the most valuable recommendation to get people to get vaccinated, rather than coming directly from the Health Department.
But given that the immunization numbers are down, as you testified, why wouldn't DOHMH use every tool and its resource, such as having the agency reach out directly on top of the provider doing so?
Right. So sometimes we do that. We all, we were using CIR tools to reach out directly to people, but also having providers use that, those tools themselves.
Okay. I mean, it just seems that since the numbers are still down, something has to change. So it, I think it would inure to the city's benefit to think outside of the box and think about the agency overlaying also outreach. And then I have a follow-up question. What are other city agencies doing to assist DOHMH in immunization vaccine outreach?
So I can't speak to all of the other agencies. But one of our key partners in this is the Department of Education. So we work closely with DOE and with school health to make sure that information about vaccines and vaccine requirements are going out through schools, through backpack letters. That's one of our really important partners in especially childhood vaccines.
So I mean, during COVID, when we had issues around trying to reach people in hard-to-reach communities, we had every single city agency, all 70 city agencies were involved in outreach. It seems to me that this would be another example of when you'd want a multi-agency approach. You want every single agency that has touchpoints to parents to be getting this information out there to them.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So now I'm going to turn it back over to Councilmember Mealy.
I just have one question. With the declining vaccination rates, do you feel nationally the parents is in opposition of getting their children vaccinated to non-medical exemptions because of the barriers of vaccination? Or is it out of their convenience on not getting their children vaccinated?
Yeah. I mean, I think all of these issues are contributing to what we're observing, right? So some, certainly, we have seen a lot of vaccine misinformation and disinformation, and that accelerated during the pandemic. I also think that certainly there are definite access issues and various barriers to people prioritizing getting all of the vaccines on the recommended schedule. And so it's hard for me to speak to the entire national perspective. I'm very focused on what's happening here in New York City.
The local.
But, you know, and locally, locally, there is no religious exemptions allowed. So we are only, and all medical exemptions are reviewed by the Health Department. So it's a minuscule part of the requirements.
Do you know what percentage is religiously?
So there are no religious exemptions allowed in New York State.
But if they are allergic to?
Oh, sorry. The medical exemption rate is 0.01%.
Okay, then. And what is DOHMH opinion for the reason that vaccination rates have not fully received following the high rate of the pandemic? Have not recovered?
Yeah.
I know someone had asked that. Maybe I didn't hear why.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a combination of a lot of different reasons. There are, the biggest gap that we're still seeing is in the four to six-year-olds. So that's the cohort of children who were infants to age three during the peak of the pandemic. So we know that there were a lot of barriers to access during that period of time that have somewhat resolved because now our zero to two-year-old is catching back up to where we were coverage-wise before 2019. But, you know, there's still barriers for those four to six-year-olds to get the entire catch-up schedule. As they get into pre-K and K where those vaccines will be required, I anticipate that will help to get us back towards where we were before.
Thank you. Thank you. And now Councilmember Ariola.
Thank you, Chair Moya. So, so what's the protocol for DOHMH and the DOE actually? For families who refuse to vaccinate their school-aged children?
So children that are not in compliance with the school requirements can be required to leave school. The way that's handled is through the Department of Education, so I can't speak to their procedure. In terms of, to your earlier questions, the work we've been doing to help new arrivals to New York City get access to care, we're really doing a lot of work to educate families about these requirements, help them identify federally qualified health centers and other community providers that can help them catch up and making sure that they're getting the documentation that they need to stay in school.
What happened to the buses that were coming to the different migrant base camps that were providing vaccinations? I know that one of the migrant base camps at Floyd Bennett Field offers vaccinations right there. Has there been a curtailing of that type of activity at the shelters and base camps?
So the Health Department doesn't oversee those programs. So the, the different agencies that are involved in the operations at those sites would be the best ones to ask about those specific operations.
Okay. So just in closing, the children and the, and the adults, because the adults need vaccinations as well, would really be able to go to any hospital, any, any city hospital, any private hospital? No one would be turned away with or without insurance and would be able to get vaccinations? So there's no real reason why there is any gap at all? Would that be, would that be a truthful statement?
Well, so people can access vaccine through the healthcare delivery system. Depending on their insurance and their coverage and which federal programs they're eligible for, they may have to look at specific options. Our one vaccine clinic that we have in Fort Greene, Brooklyn, will see people regardless of immigration status or ability to pay for age four and older. For the families with children, many children will be eligible for Vaccines for Children. So for children especially, I just want to make sure people are aware that it's really important that those vaccines be administered in the context of an entire pediatric visit so that their other medical developmental, social needs can be addressed as part of taking care of the whole child. So that's really where we've put our effort is towards helping link people to care within the New York City context.
Thank you.
Thank you. Doc, I just want to go back to asking you just two more questions and then I'll, I'll end it there. But it's, it's on the vaccination trends. Can you provide an overview of the current vaccination rates in New York City that's broken down by demographic factors such as race, socioeconomic status, religion, and borough? And which borough has the lowest vaccination rate of MMR, DTAP, polio, and, and various? The chicken box. Thank you.
Sure. So the way that we tend to look at vaccine coverage, first of all, this is data that's coming out of the citywide immunization registry in terms of people who have had that vaccine administered. And then the coverage part is looking at it out of the number of people that we estimate to be in that age cohort based on the census. So I think in your opening remarks, you also mentioned that we have some difficulty estimating the denominator, especially for the youngest cohort of children because they weren't born yet when the census occurred. So, so I just want people to understand what, what I'm saying when I'm using these rates and coverage, talking about coverage rates. We also use the, that metric of up to date by age 35 months with the seven vaccine series. Again, each of those vaccines has multiple doses required. So for that two-year-old measure, I can just read out what the coverage rates were by borough. Bronx was 69%, Brooklyn 51%, Manhattan 71%, Queens 64%, and Staten Island 50%. We also have that same metric broken out by race and ethnicity. So, I, I, well, do you want me to just read all of them? So, I, well, do you want me to just read all of them? So for black, non-Hispanic, 54%, Hispanic, Latino, 66%, white, non-Hispanic, 45%, American, Indian, non-Hispanic, 34%, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, 74%, and two or more races, non-Hispanic, 16%. So there's a pretty wide range.
Right.
That's the kind of takeaway. I also have the same coverage numbers for just the MMR, that's for the ages four to six.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
I don't.
It's just helpful to get those.
No, I think it's a really important question because we do have a lot of variation in these outcomes and it really points to important issues about access, uptake, vaccine confidence, et cetera. So I do appreciate you asking the question.
Thank you.
Okay. We can send the numbers to council afterward, too.
That'd be great.
Okay, so this is for MMR, which is measles, rubella, completing the entire two-dose series within, in the age four to six. So overall, 85% coverage. For borough, 87, Bronx was 87%, Brooklyn 84%, Manhattan 88%, Queens 89%, Staten Island 76%. And then for race, ethnicity, black, non-Hispanic, 79%, Hispanic, Latino, 82%, white, 76%, American, Indian, non-Hispanic, 48%, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander, non-Hispanic, 73%, and two or more races, non-Hispanic, 19%. So even just look at those borough numbers, just want to point out that because MMR is one of the required vaccines for school and many four and five-year-olds are in school already, we have much better coverage for that one compared to the younger age group. And that's one of the key things that we've been talking about today.
I'm sorry, did you say Queens was 89%?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And so the, what trend is DOHMH observing in the declining vaccination rates? And specifically, like which vaccines have seen a decrease, which have remained stable and which have seen an increase?
Sure. So going back to these two indicators that we've been talking about, the proportion of two-year-olds who are up to date with the combined seven vaccine series, overall, New York City-wide, 60% of two-year-olds as of December 31, 2023 were up to date. Prior to the pandemic in 2019, that rate was 62%. So it has nearly recovered to the point where it was prior to the pandemic. Now, for the MMR that we were just talking about, very different scenario, the overall New York City coverage for four to six-year-olds having received both MMR doses is 85% also as of December 31, 2023. But that is 16 percentage points lower compared to pre-pandemic when it was 99%. So that is a real concern and like I said, those children who were four to six as of December 31, 2023 were the ones who were zero to two during 2020 and 2021.
So how does the agency plan to address these disparities in the vaccination rates across the different demographic groups, which we talked about in the city? And are there targeted outreach in campaigns for particular populations, especially amongst those that continue to experience medical stigma and discrimination?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. So as I think people here certainly appreciate, when it comes to information about vaccine, the messenger can be as important as the message. And so we really do need to leverage all of our community partnerships, other agencies like Department of Education, community leaders like yourselves to really get the message out and then the work that we're doing with providers to make sure that they have the, you know, information about talking to families and getting them up to date as well, how to leverage our CIR to really make their practices vaccine champions. So that's all the types of work that we're doing, especially for the four to six-year-olds in terms of like that school requirements and getting caught up on MMR. We are really, we do our back-to-school campaign. We're also doing a push with DOE like this week and next week to try to remind people to try to get these vaccines while they're on spring break or in advance of any summer travel, in particular to places outside of the US where measles may be circulating. So that's the type of work that we're doing. Yeah, I mean, I think it's definitely, definitely like a lot, everyone is invited to the champion vaccine party.
Well, and I'll end it with this. How specifically can we, the city council, support the efforts of the agency to address the decline in the vaccination rates?
Yeah, certainly. Very thankful for your support and also just for this hearing and it's such an important topic, one I'm obviously passionate about. You know your communities better than we do and you're a trusted messenger, so really just helping to amplify the message, pointing people towards reputable sources for vaccine information like the health department, but also CDC, other, you know, accurate sources of information about vaccines. And if you know of particular community groups that we should meet with or partner with, we're happy to, you know, learn more about that and ask that you reach out to our community affairs groups to set that up for us.
Great. Doctor, thank you so much for your testimony today and thank you for the great work that you're doing. Appreciate you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. And thank you very much, members of the administration. We will now move to public testimony. All right. So we will now hear testimony from the public. I will call up individuals in panels and all testimony will be limited to two minutes. I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. I will now call up our first panelist, Christopher Leon Johnson.
Hey, what's up? Ready? Ready? Hey, good afternoon, Chair Moya, De La Rosa, Mealy, and Mamarato. So I want to make this clear, you know, there's a reason that these rates for the COVID shots and vaccinations are being lower because the schools are not being compliant, the health department, they're not pushing for more funding for education to get these kids vaccinated and stay in compliance with the vaccinations. Then you have a problem with certain organizations that certain members of the city council have no problem standing next to it, that mainly in the Common Sense Caucus and the Republican Party, which is called Teachers with Choice and Children Health Defense, who was funded by Mark Gordon, who funds transportation alternatives, they have a big say now in the city council about vaccines and measles mandates. And what they're able to do is bring in anti-Semitic conspiracy theories about the vaccines. So what we need to start doing a little more is, we have to try to, I just say, suppress those voices that are pushing these theories about vaccines and shots because I took my COVID shots, I'm still here. I took my measles shots, I'm still here. There's a lot of people that take these shots and they're still here in the city of New York. But yeah, of course, a few people die, but that doesn't mean that just because a few people die, doesn't mean that there's a big issue with the COVID shots and the vaccines and the measles shots. So like I said before, again, we have to, we have to really come together as a city council and the state assembly because these same members harassing a fellow Dominican named Karina Reyes, harassing her because she's trying to save lives with making kids, trying to get kids to be vaccinated, but these so-called conspiracy theories of Teachers with Choice and Children Health Defense are pushing, are being against this bill and all they're trying to do is spread anti-Semitic conspiracy theories about the vaccines and et cetera. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you so much for your testimony today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So that concludes the in-person portion of our public testimony. We will now move to remote testimony. I will call individuals in groups of four, so please listen for your name. Once your name is called to begin testifying, a member of our staff will unmute you and you may begin once you accept the prompt and the sergeant-at-arms sets the clock and queues you. I will now call up our first panelist. It will be Molly Sennec. You may begin once the sergeant queues you.
Starting time.
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Molly Sennec and I am testifying on behalf of the Center for Independence of the Disabled New York. So we talked a little bit about herd immunity and the lack of herd immunity creates a dual problem specifically regarding disability and the student body. Students who have a disability that prevents them from being vaccinated, as you guys heard earlier, such as a compromised immune system, have diminished protection against diseases that can cause them irreversible harm. And also, the reason vaccinating against certain diseases became the standard was because those diseases had the potential to cause permanent disability, such as polio, which we just saw cases of again. So New York actually has some of the most stringent vaccine requirements needed for school enrollment in the country. However, those requirements are only effective if the barriers to fulfilling them don't become significant enough to supersede their importance. So to lower this risk, New York City should be taking initiatives to remove as many of these barriers to the vaccine accessibility as possible. Students from immigrant families, from low-income families, and who live in temporary housing all face additional barriers in navigating the process of fulfilling vaccine requirements. New York City can help remove these barriers through vaccine reimbursement programs, through better access to information in multiple languages, and stronger partnerships with community organizations that might be able to provide additional aid. Partnerships with community organizations were effective during the 2019 measles outbreak, but New York City is currently cutting funding for community schools that provide these connections. New York City is also currently cutting funding for school nurses, whereas increasing this funding or just simply not cutting it could mean more access to in-school vaccinations, removing barriers for those who have difficulties receiving them elsewhere. So emphasis really needs to be placed on preventative measures to make sure vaccines don't become inaccessible. Otherwise, we are just collectively risking the health of our students, both those who are currently disabled and those who could become so by contracting a disease known to be forgettable. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Molly. If there's anyone present in the room or on Zoom that hasn't had the opportunity to testify, please raise your hand. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair Moya, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing.
Thank you, and that will conclude our hearing on the Subcommittee of COVID and Infectious Diseases, along with the Committee on Health. I want to take this opportunity to thank Sarah and Manure, the Subcommittee Counsel and Policy Analyst, and also to Megan Taddeo and to Chantel from our office who are here today, and to my colleagues for attending this hearing today. Thank you.